Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 1st Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll get started by reading our roll, please, Tamara.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen. Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
With us to give our invocation tonight is Pastor Charlie Moore from Sunny Crest United Methodist Church, so please rise for his invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty Father, we come before you to be thankful and grateful for the blessings in our lives. Thankful for those that are here. We just lift you up, remind us we have to praise you daily and be grateful daily. Today, we lift up those leaders in Sioux Falls for wisdom, for grace, for compassion. We lift up those that are part of our city. Just ask that you protect everybody. We lift up our brothers and sisters in Ukraine in a situation we cannot comprehend. May God bless us and know that Jesus loves us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you Pastor Charlie Moore for leading the invocation. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Any changes or a motion there?
Yes, thank you.
Move approval? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. That's okay. Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item, or it's sub item 15 in the contract memo.
All right. Any other items to be pulled? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move ahead to item 25. It's our regular agenda. Look for a motion on the agenda, please.
Move approval Jensen.
Second Kylie.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion there? Counselor Jensen?
I'd make a motion to amend by moving items 56 after 44, 57 after 42, 60 through 62 after 51.
Second Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, let's vote on that amendment, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that then, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Move to our next item, the item pulled from our consent agenda.
Sub item 15, Department Human Resources, project description, agreement to provide the city of Sioux Falls an assistance program for employees that may be experiencing issues related to stress, depression, grief, codependency, financial problems, or addictive disorders for the period of 3/1/22 to 2/28/23. Vendor Key Solutions amount $21,744.
All right. Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just had a few questions for Human Resources or Director O'Toole. Thank you, Director, for answering some of my questions this afternoon, but I... Give us an overview of what this program does, or what this contract does.
Sure. The city of Sioux Falls has engaged multiple providers for employee assistance, for employee counseling, family counseling, various programs and services, training, just a host of issues, and our two current providers are Family Services and Key Solutions.
My concern, and it was a concern because I think this is the second year with this vendor, or at least this is a contract extension, and it was a concern last year. A constituent brought it to my attention that there were... The director of the program was under federal investigation at the time, a year ago when we did this, and now there's been a conviction, a federal conviction. And I guess I'm interested in the response that the vendor had with defending the person because it involved lying and making up board minutes and grant funds and a combination of things. So I guess I'm just looking for the next explanation of why we would move forward then with this vendor.
Counselor, as I stated in the email, obviously when that issue came up, we engaged with that entity. I talked to the CEO of the organization at the time about that issue, expressed some concerns. And as that moved forward, obviously that information was made public. And the information that was shared back with Human Resources at the time is that that activity occurred prior to our employment with Key Solutions. It happened with an entity out of Chamberlain, South Dakota. Her plea didn't result in a loss of her license as a counselor. Didn't involve patient care or activities under the purview of the agreement. And Key affirmed the city of Sioux Falls that they would not allow that issue to jeopardize the services under the contract.
I guess my concern, when I look at the news release from the U.S. Attorney's Office, and I'll paraphrase, and I shared the rest of this news release with the rest of the council, or at least a link to it, is that she knowingly and intentionally made materially false statements regarding the creation, submission, and veracity of board meeting minutes and documents provided to DPS in response. But, and the same paragraph ends with, "She knew her statements were untrue when she made the statements to investigators." And my concern is that we're working with public employees, both police, fire, the stress, and the relationship that you have with a counselor is one of trust. And this is still, the person is still under, on parole or supervision. And I'm just concerned that this isn't a good investment of city funds, that the trust between counselors and vendors and our trusted employees who need help, whether it's mental health issues or substance abuse and through the whole thing, there's, there has to be that trust. And this, at least until the person fulfills the sentence, it's hard for me to say that that's a good use of city funds.
I understand what you're saying, counselor. Like I said, we express some concerns that that individual was an employee of Key Solutions, not an employee of the city of Sioux Falls. And given the assurances that we had, again, they decided to stand by their employee through that time and gave us the insurances. There have been no issues that we're aware of in terms of the performance of duty under that contract, nor is Key. And I guess that's as much as I can respond to the statements you've made.
But the Missouri Valley Crisis Center didn't know there was anything going on either until after the investigation was brought in by federal authorities. So to say that, you know, we don't know, we're not having any problems currently, I just, I'm struggling with this. It doesn't make sense, so, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Bill while we have him here?
Just a quick follow-up, and it's a question for Counselor Starr because I did read the link that you'd forwarded. Was the person in question the CEO when she was in Chamberlain with the Missouri Valley Crisis Center? And she's not in that position with this particular business.
I don't know her position, title. I believe it's in the release here, and I apologize for not knowing that right off the top of my head, but I know that she's the Director of the Program for Employee Assistance now with the current vendor with Key Solutions. And I'm assuming, I'm looking back, I'm not going to assume what she was, what her title was when she was there because I don't believe I have it, but she was the one, was the Director of the Missouri Valley Crisis Center in Chamberlain, South Dakota. So, yeah, she was the Director there, and she's the Director now of this program that we're approving a contract for.
Program Director, but not the Director of the company, correct?
Correct. She is the Director of EAP Services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Bill here? Counselor Knightzert?
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Appreciate that.
In that position, do you know if this person would be having one-on-one counseling sessions? Or she's supervising the people that would with our employees?
She would be doing both.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Bill here? All right. Look for a motion. Oh, true. Thank you, Counselor Jensen. Anyone from the public want to speak on this item? All right. I look for a motion then.
Move approval Jensen.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Selberg. Any discussion on this then? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
No.
Brecky.
No.
All right. That's going to pass, six to two. We'll move on to our next item.
Item 26 is a new 2022 retail liquor license for Alpine II LLC Alpine Sports Bar and Casino, 22112 South Stevie Avenue, Suite 102. Item 27 is a new 2022 retail liquor license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, High Rollers Casino, 2704 South Ellis Road, Suite 101. Pending final inspections per Health and Building Services. Item 28 is a new 2022 retail liquor license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, Golden Coin Casino, 405 North Kewanas Avenue. Item 29 is a new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License, and new 2022 retail wine license for Casey's Retail Company. Casey's number 39633820 West Benson Road, CUP not required. Pending final inspections per Health and Building Services. Item 30 is a request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Casey's Retail Company. Casey's number 39633820 West Benson Road. Pending final inspections per Health and Building Services. Item 31 is transfer of 2022 retail liquor license from Quan Holdings Incorporated, Crown Casino on Cliff 2, 902 South Cliff Avenue to Dave and Buster's of South Dakota Incorporated. Dave and Buster's 2690 South Lorraine Place, full-service restaurant, CUP not required. Item 32 is a transfer of 2022 retail liquor license from VFW Servicemen's Club, VFW 3601 South Minnesota Avenue to VFW Servicemen's Club, VFW 1700 West Russell Street, CUP not required. Item 33 is transfer of a 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License, including video lottery terminals from MG Oil Company, Happy Jacks 54601 East Arrowhead Parkway, Suite 109, to MG Oil Company, Jokers 825503 North Cliff Avenue, Suite 101. Item 34 is renewal of 2022-23 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Jokers 825503 North Cliff Avenue, Suite 101. Item 35 is transfer of 2021-22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License, including video lottery terminals from Y&amp;M LLC Chance Casino, 5503 North Cliff Avenue to MG Oil Company, Jokers 85503 North Cliff Avenue. Item 36 is renewal of 2022-23 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Jokers 85503 North Cliff Avenue. Item 37 is a special one-day liquor license for KJTLLC to be operated at 301 South Thompson Avenue for a wedding on March 8th, 2022. Item 38 is a special one-day liquor license for the Hello High to be operated at 600 North Main Avenue, Suite 110 for a cocktail dinner on March 15th, 2022. Item 39 is a special one-day malt beverage license for Sulan Heritage Museums to be operated at 200 West Sixth Street for a special event on March 17th, 2022.
Jamie, good evening.
Jamie Palmeyer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have on items 26 through 39.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone from the public who would like to speak on any of these items? Counselors, do you have any questions on any of these? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Jamie, item number 30, Casey's Request to Add Video Lottery Terminals. Remind me, in a gas station, does that have to be in a separate room or enclosure? Or what would that look like?
It would have to be in a separate room because, of course, video lottery has to be away from children. No one under 21 can have access to them, so it would have to be in some type of separate room. I know the representatives from Casey's are here tonight if you have any additional questions about their layout and such.
Okay. That's probably satisfactory, just that it's in a separate room and it's not just walk-in and there's terminals. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jamie? All right. Look for a motion to approve these items.
Move approval Jensen.
Second Kylie.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Kylie on this. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 40 is a second reading deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, and Monday, January 31st, 2022. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 3801 South Elmwood Avenue from the C3 Commercial Community District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District, number 15507, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, six to zero. Private applicants, Bob Nats.
Good evening, Albert.
Mayor, Council, Albert Schmidt, City of Sioux Falls, Planning and Development Services. This one is requested to be withdrawn by the applicant at this time, so we'll ask for that this time.
All right. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on item 40 then? All right, counselors, could I have a motion to that?
I move withdraw.
Second Brecky.
Okay. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Brecky to withdraw item 40. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 41 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1024 West 17th Street from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 154282021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, John Small.
So this location is at 1024 West 17th Street in Sioux Falls. Approximate size is .08 acres. And the purpose here is to construct, in addition to the existing home that is on a lot less than 50 feet, so to meet the minimum standards, they need to rezone. With that, I can take any questions.
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselor, you got any questions on this item tonight?
Move approval.
Second Kylie.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing done. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is 42, a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West Benson Road and west of North Marion Road from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts, number 15702, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Bros Engineering Incorporated.
All right. So this one is owned by Clint Ackerman. Location is south of West Benson Road and west of North Marion Road. Approximate size for this new residential development is 133 acres. And again, the purpose here is to initiate that first zoning for this development to construct single-family, multifamily, and commercial at this location.
All right. Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Counselor, you have any questions here tonight? Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Thank you. Albert, one of the things that someone stopped me the other day, and I would say this is a dense area, or is becoming a dense area rather quickly in the density that we're looking for. How do we plan for, it's probably more of a question for Heath, but you get to be here. How do we plan the traffic? It seems like we're, it feels like there's going to be more traffic in this area and the congestion that's going to come with it. Do we plan for larger streets at this point? How do we, it's a chicken or an egg type of thing, and, you know, we do it across the city. I mean, Veterans Parkway is probably a perfect example of where we've built a lot of road with not a lot of density yet, but it's coming, so. Are we confident that we have the infrastructure in place to move these type of projects forward?
Sure. Great question. So typically with roadside things, we evaluate at the plating side how much right-of-way we're going to need based on the future zoning that we project. And so anything outside of RS, single-family, which is that single-family side of it, we go for typically 80 feet of right-of-way, up to in collectors, 100, 110 feet, depending on the specific situation. So with that additional right-of-way, that allows us to come in later on and upgrade the road as traffic needs. What you don't want to do typically is try to get too far ahead where you're building a really expensive road for 25 years, and you don't need it for that potential, and now you just try to rebuild it, and you wasted a ton of money. So, thank you.
Any other questions on this one? All right. Let me look for a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Second Jensen.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there on that motion? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is 57, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of McGee Farms Edition, 15704, 2021. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Bros Engineering Incorporated, moved by amendment.
All right. So this is the same location. This is just the preliminary subdivision plan. Again, we're looking at this, looking at how is it going to be connected to the neighborhood, how the connection's going to go, and the general layout. So with that, I can take any questions.
All right. Anyone to speak on this one tonight? Counselor, you got any questions on this? Look for a motion then, please.
Move approval Jensen.
Second Kylie.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Kylie. Any discussion there? All right, hearing done. Let's vote on that.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 43 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 501 South Holly Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District, number 15759, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Nova Properties LLC, Ashton Larson.
Right. So this one's in the southwest quadrant of the city. Size is approximately .13 acres in size. Again, we're looking to construct and do higher density here with a duplex instead of the single-family that's there now. Hence the request for the rezone. So with that, we take any questions.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 43? Counselor, she got any questions for Albert on this one?
Move approval.
Second, Knightzert? All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Knightzert. Discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie. Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is 44, is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East Madison Street and east of Veterans Parkway from the AG Agricultural, C3 Community Commercial, CN Conservation, LW Live Work Districts to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, LW Live Work, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and CN Conservation. Number 15805, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Earhart Griffin and Associates, Damian Grebel.
All right. This one is located north of East Madison Street and east of North Veterans Parkway along that newly constructed road there. Approximate size for this new development is 85 acres in size. And again, the purpose here is a new residential development with office and commercial as well.
All right. Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselor, any questions for Albert here? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move to approve. Knightzert?
Second Sale.
Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 56 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of East Prairie Edition, 15806, 2021. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Earhart Griffin and Associates, Damian Grebel, moved by amendment.
All right. This is the same location, again, preliminary subdivision plan, looking at how it connects into the neighborhood. I can take any questions you have.
Anyone from the public here to speak on 56? Questions, counsel, tonight, for Albert?
Move approval.
Second Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, we'll vote on that one.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That's going to pass eight to zero. Move on to our next item.
Item 45 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 3511 South Gateway Boulevard from the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District, number 15810, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Sayre Paul Corn.
All right. So this is in the southwest quarter. And again, 3511 South Gateway Boulevard is the location. It's on approximately 1.39 acres in size. is the location. It's on approximately 1.39 acres in size. And this one, the purpose is to convert that existing apartment complex from senior living to market rate apartments and convert some of the common space into additional living units without expanding the existing building.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on 45? Any questions tonight, counsel? All right, take a motion here.
I saw a move.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale and seconded by Jensen to approve 45. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 46 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 2225 North Bonson Avenue from the AG Agricultural District to the I2 Heavy Industrial District, number 15831, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Willitsen Lund Engineering, Eric Willitsen.
All right, location here is at 2225 North Bonson Avenue, located northeast corner of town, 27.26 acres in size. And the purpose here is to look at constructing contractor shops and storage yards in the future.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak on item 46 from the public? All right, council, you got any questions for Albert here?
Move approval.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve this item. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Next item is 47, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 153, annexation policies. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right, second time here for you for annexation side of things. I'll keep it a little more brief than I did the first time. Our annexation task force, not a few years back, 2017, we had quite a few meetings going on that year to cover the topic, to educate everybody in the process about what was going on. We covered 10 general topics during that process. And throughout that wonderful dialogue that we had between public input, internal dialogue between the counselors, people who lived in the city, people who lived outside the city in both counties, we came up with some criterias to help out, you know, with that process of the city initiated sides of things. This does not, again, impact if I voluntarily want to bring my property, and this is only if the city sees a property and it's not annexed, and at what point do we then engage that property owner about maybe becoming part of the city with annexation. So you can see there's three things tonight that this presentation is referencing, this one and the next two. With this one, this is specific to those areas that have been annexed around. So again, this isn't the purpose of the city reaching out to go get a cornfield or go get other areas. This is we've already developed around those areas and they're just, they're still there and they're unannexed. And so we look at that and go, we have services already out there. It's economical to provide those services for us, it's efficient use of our public funds. And so with that in mind, we determine these criterias. And the first and foremost one was, is it already annexed around? And is that land developed for the final use it should be used as, indicating, you know, if it's a park, is this an open space, is it RS, is there a house on there? That is those kind of things. Then in addition to that, if that criteria is met, then we engage on the next level and go, is one of the other four there? Did we already spend city funds to get water service, sewer services out there? Are we planning on doing that in the near future? Is it creating a health and safety issue potentially for properties around there? Does it need to be access for different development going on there? So we tried to think of what could be going on there, and those are the criteria we came up with to help limit the scope of what the city would look at, so we aren't just going out to all property owners, saying, it's time for you to come in, it's time for you to come in, really focus and go, all right, literally, this is the end of the road, we need to talk to you seriously about annexing your property now. So with that, I can take any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 47? All right, council, you have any questions for Albert on 47? Councilor Kylie, go ahead.
I'll try to be even more brief. Basically, what we're doing here with this item and the next two is that we're ensuring that all the recommendations that were brought forth by the annexation task force in 2017 are actually in ordinance to help to ensure that there's consistency in how they're administered from administration to administration. So it's nothing new. It's, was discussed very thoroughly five years ago. So, thank you.
All right. Any questions for Albert? If not, we'll get a motion on the floor on this one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Knightzert. All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Knightzert. Discussion amongst the council here. All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 48.
Item 48 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 53, publicly owned treatment works pertaining to private wastewater disposal. Sponsor is the mayor.
So again, with this one, same reason why we're here, but this one relates specifically for the engineering design standards on that sewer side of things, giving the allowance to put into an agreement so that they can continue to use their septic systems until it fails. That's kind of the goal of this, to help private property owners utilize the full value of the infrastructure they've already paid for and put in place. Otherwise, I can take any questions.
Okay, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on 48 tonight? Counsel, any questions here? Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Again, very briefly, just this offers flexibility that did not exist before for the individual that lived in that development that was going to be annexed. The next item also will include flexibility that did not exist previously. Thank you.
Any questions for Albert here? If not, we'll take a motion on this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Knightzert.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Knightzert. Discussion amongst the council here. All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 49 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 59, Water Department Regulations in Relation to Water Service in Annexed Areas. Sponsor is the mayor.
Thank you all again for hearing the annexation task force recommendations to put to ordinance. This is the final one, simply put, for water connection, we're increasing that notice of time to connect from two to five years. Again, give more time for people to make that financial commitment and get prepared for that connection.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone here to speak on this item tonight from the public? Any questions, counsel, on this one?
Move to approve.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Knightzert to approve 49. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Move to item 50.
Item 50 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 39, Personnel Regulations and Benefits, Retirement and Pensions, Subchapter Vacation Leave. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Bill.
Counselor Brecky.
I'm going to recuse myself from this, and I want, I'd like to have council member, or excuse me, city clerk, Tom Greco, I've just got a question for him before I do.
Go ahead.
I talked to you earlier this week and asked for clarification on the action of recusing oneself, and that it is, it's my understanding that you agree that it is not subject to debate or discussion, the action of recusal?
The action itself, no, it's not, and it's in ordinance that one may excuse themselves from an item at the time it's read.
Okay. And then I would just ask the mayor, is that, am I correct that that's your understanding as well, that action of recusing is not subject to debate or discussion?
Yeah, we're not going to take any debate.
Okay, thank you. And as per the statute, I am required by city ordinance to explain my recusal, and so I will read the following statement. I will be recusing myself from the next five items. I believe voting on these items at this time creates an appearance of impropriety and a conflict of interest for me because, number one, the timing of these proposals are so close to an election in which I am a candidate, and number two, the comprehensiveness of the benefits package being offered is so close to an election, and number three, the negotiation is taking place outside of the terms of the previously negotiated contracts, and that these reasons creates for me the appearance of impropriety and a conflict of interest under the city's code of ordinances, section 34-005 and section 35-054E. So I am recusing myself from this vote on all of these next five items because once you recuse yourself from an issue, you need to recuse yourself from all the items associated with that issue. And so that's why I'm doing that today, because it's related to the issue that I recused myself from two weeks ago. And also pursuant to city ordinance, I will refrain from any further public or private comment, discussion, or participation regarding any of these items.
All right, you're recused.
Then I just ask that someone notify me when you're finished, so I can come back in.
Bill, floor is yours.
Bill O'Toole, Director of Human Resources, thank you. As was mentioned, we've got five items tonight that really address the employer of choice plan. This specific item deals with vacations, but I'd like a little flexibility so I could just set the stage, and I promise to try to get this done in about five minutes or less. But this item and four others are going to address the employer of choice plan. In order for us to implement the employer of choice plan, it requires actions in multiple areas, including city ordinances and labor contracts for council approval. As you can see, the plan promotes nine initiatives in three key areas, including recruitment, retention, and employee well-being. We have been working on this plan since October, November. This was initiated by the human resources team, finance, and really our operations team. So why are we proposing this plan? I think everybody understands we are in a very unique and challenging labor environment. We have been. The COVID pandemic has been around since 2020. Our unemployment rate in Sioux Falls in November was 1.8%. Inflation rates are at the highest they've been in over 40 years. I will say that again, inflation is running higher than it has in 40 years. When we started talking about this, the CPIU was running at 6.8%, and as of January, it was 7.5%. We've also had some concerning employment indicators that we obviously have been paying attention to, and I want to share some of those. And these are some trends we've been seeing since 2018. Our vacancies are up 44%. The number of interviews that we've conducted since 2018 are up 55%. We've had 11% decrease in the number of applications. And our new hires have had an increase of 41%, and we've seen a 38% increase in separation since 2018. Now that we're year-end, we know that our 2021 turnover rate was 9.8%, and then 2018, it was 7.16%. I would submit we are in some extraordinary times, and it requires us to maybe consider some actions we wouldn't otherwise consider taking. The employer of choice plan is a proactive approach, and it's going to help ensure that we can continue to provide the essential city programs and services, including our public safety and infrastructure. It is our employees that are delivering the programs and services for the city of Sioux Falls, and we also want to be an employer of a choice in this region. Now, one of the items that has received a fair amount of attention is involving the $2,000 payment that we referred to as a retention incentive. But I think what's really important to understand and what it is doing, it is actually acting as what I would call an inflation leveller. We think that a secondary impact of that action is efforts in the area of retention, and we also think it shows and demonstrates a commitment to our employees and an investment in our employees, and is responsive in a very meaningful way. So what do I mean by inflation leveller? You heard me talk about inflation running at 7.5%. The cost of living adjustment for the various employee groups in the city of Sioux Falls for 2022 was beginning 2% and 2.5%. So to help provide some context with respect to what does that $2,000 payment represent, it means different things to different employee groups based on their average salary. For example, the average annual compensation for an APSME member, that $2,000 payment represents 4% of their salary. So if you take the 2.5% base, add in 4%, obviously you're about 6.5%, which puts us in a more competitive position. For our police and fire groups, it represents about 3% of their compensation. So that gets us between 5 and 5.5%. And for our last employee group, those covered by chapter 39 are mid-management appointed, well, it doesn't apply to appointed, but the mid-management classified groups, it represents about a 2% to their salary, and that gets them at an aggregate of about 4.5%. One of the things that we like about this approach is that it has more meaning for those that might be lower on the pay scales. Another point of feedback that we received is, well, why don't we consider putting this into the base? It's a reasonable question, but part of the strategy, as you'll see up here, under the retain side of the equation, is that we're going to initiate an independent review of our compensation and benefits package this year, and we want that to be the foundation that informs us and allows us to make those longer-term decisions as it relates to our compensation and benefits on a permanent basis. I think everybody can appreciate that our personnel costs can be significant, and we think obtaining the comprehensive data that measures how we're doing against our peer cities and other employers is the way to go. Finally, the agenda item that's before you today is also just one piece of this, and that this particular item deals with vacation side of it. And let me just summarize what it's actually doing. It's providing a bank of hours, of 40 hours, to new hires, and allows them to accrue up to two weeks of vacation during their first year. We are also collapsing the schedule, and it allows employees to earn vacation sooner than the current plan. And it also reduces the amount of time from 19 years to 14 years to reach the max. Again, what we're really addressing with this issue is, under the well-being side, is the work-life balance. If that's one thing we've heard regularly from our employees, and a lot of employees, is how important that is. And lastly, let me just say that we are one of probably 20 of the largest employers in this region, and we are all competing for talent. We need to be proactive, and we need to invest in our employees. This plan represents a measured and strategic approach to help guide us, and I would respectfully urge your support for the plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 50 tonight? Come on up.
Greetings. I'm David Zalkaitis, and I'm waiting for my PowerPoint.
Clock's gone, so we're home.
All right, here we are. Agenda item 50, more vacation. All right, so on an unrelated tangent, I wanted to promote some diversity and lighten the mood a little bit, so I wore this cool funky shirt. Unrelated. All right, the city plan is to give more vacation time to employees, and it affects some of the people here. New employees start with an extra week, and because of that, sometimes new employees get more time than more senior staff. And employees are going to accrue zero to six more vacation times, more vacation days than under the current plan. I had to do some math here to figure out who gets how many more days. And depending upon how many service years you have, that determines how many more days of vacation time you get. According to this chart, you get anywhere between zero and four more days per month. I guess that's the units. And so that's, you know, zero to six days per year extra than what you have now. Firefighters, some of them get increased vacation. But there's some confusion in the city ordinance because the units of monthly accrual are not specified. And then there's an error there that says it doesn't apply to the mayor, but according to the city ordinance, it actually does. So that should all be clarified. There's some talk about appointive officers. I had to figure out what the heck those are. Those are mid-level managers appointed by the mayor, approved by the council. And they start with an unspecified bank of vacation time. That's kind of curious. And the mayor can pick whatever time, whatever accrual rates he wants. It's kind of a risky way to do it, but that's what the ordinance says. And there's the text of the ordinance that says the mayor can just pick whatever. Not how I would do it. Now, there's a couple of problems here. The first one I noted was a lack of market analysis. I saw nothing in the city's proposal about a market comparison. I think if you're going to change vacation time, you should have a market comparison first instead of afterwards. Another problem, and this is really the crux of the issue, it looks like the incumbents are trying to buy votes. This change in vacation time is coming right before the election. It looks like you're trying to buy votes from employees, spouses, and their friends. This could really make quite an impact because generally speaking, not very many people vote in a mayoral election. Bad way to do things. Another problem related to the other one is taxpayers are funding a reelection campaign effectively. If the cost to the city goes up, taxpayers pay for that, and that's going towards a reelection campaign. Not the way to do it. Another problem here is, you know, appointive officers get unspecified amount of vacation. Risky way to do it. I saw some rhetoric a couple of weeks ago that kind of manipulative. It said that city employees deserve something. Well, as soon as you say that employees deserve something, then it's hard to have a rational analysis. And what's worse is if you disagree with that assessment, well, then you're being misinterpreted as anti-employee. Hard to have a discussion under those conditions. All right, and then I saw this slide during the last council meeting talking about this particular agenda item. And there's a talk about modifying sick leave. That's not really a part of the agenda item, so I would have put it somewhere else. All right, so some recommendations, appointive officers should be treated like other people, clarify ordinance section about, give us some units, don't bribe employees for votes, vote against this agenda item, care more about taxpayers, and, you know, relax a little bit, try to enjoy life a little bit more, and enjoy nature in the wintertime.
Anyone else to speak on this tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cooper Carraway. I'm the president of the South Dakota Federation of Labor. We represent over 100 trade unions and workers organizations across the state, including the city of Sioux Falls workers here. I'm here to say that you'll be happy to hear that city employees' votes are not for sale. In fact, when they receive raises, pay increases, bonuses, it doesn't influence their political decisions any more than when a regular constituents, driveway or sidewalk gets fixed, or a plot hole gets filled. It makes them happy the plot hole gets filled, but they don't see it as a bribe. They see it as the government doing the job of the government. And part of that job is paying your employees. The good thing about this plan is that it is the rare circumstance in which it is both proactive and reactive. It's reactive because as the market analysis pointed out, the city workers' COLAs have fallen behind CPI in recent years. And in fact, there's been some other unforeseen circumstances that led to city workers bringing home less money than they're used to. Aside from the inflation and things like that, we've had a lot less snowfall, which has led to less overtime from street workers and some other folks. And so this plan is proactive in that it provides some relief to folks who have taken kind of a financial hit in the past couple of years from inflation and from the changing environment. And it's also proactive in that it allows for the city to compete with the rapidly growing and changing marketplace. I saw that the other day, Target announced it's raising its minimum pay to $24 an hour in some places. in some places. You need folks who are going to do the business of the city and keep the city running, and this is a proactive approach to do that, and it's pay that the workers have earned. The South Dakota Federation of Labor fully encourages the city government to pass this plan, to pass all five sections of this plan, and we say, again, city workers, just like regular constituents, votes are not for sale. They do not feel bribed. Many of them are here, many of them will speak to you tonight. They do not feel bribed, they do not feel manipulated. They feel like this is something that was agreed upon through a mutual negotiation between the workers and the city. I've heard from most folks, even the folks opposing this, most of them say that they understand that the people who do the business of the city deserve these pay increases. What they're opposed to is the process. The good thing about being on the city council is that you decide what the process is. You decide who you send to the negotiation table on your behalf. You decide, there are some cities that insist that a city councilman be present in all negotiations, some cities that contract it out to an outside attorney, things like this. If you're unhappy with the way that the negotiations are done, or the way you receive information, you're in charge of that. You govern that, you can rewrite those rules anytime you want to. But the time to have that conversation isn't when city employees' wages and financial stability are being considered and held in the balance. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Cooper. Anyone else here to speak on item 50 tonight?
Now, let's get into reality, because unions are bought people, right? They're not like you usually, you know, they don't fight for your people like back in the day, right? So they're politically bought out. But I will tell you that, because I don't care what the union says, because you remember when that stuff happened with the police? We couldn't give them a raise, a big raise, but we had to have a riot. And when that riot happened, boy, we gave them a big raise, right, to keep them there. That wasn't political either. This is a bunch of craziness, right? So we don't care. I'm not a brown nose. I'm not a union rep. Nobody can buy me out. But it's sure in the hell suspicious when the mayor's going to do it around election time. I'm not saying it's bribery or not bribery, but it's sure in the hell suspicious. Why couldn't we do this way before the election? Why did we have to give that big pay increase to the police department when they had to face that riot and had attempted murder charges on these people? Then we had to give them a big pay raise. Why did we have to wait till something bad happens to give a big pay raise like this? So I don't care what the union says, because the union, again, is not for your people. They don't fight for your people like they used to back in the day. Because I used to be a union rep back in the 90s, and we fought for our people, and we couldn't be brought out. So let's give them what they want, but let me tell you something. Come election time, man, everything happens around election time, huh? But during all the four years, none of this happens like this, right? I bet you if we have another riot in the city with the police, they'll be getting a bigger raise too, huh? Because that's how it happens. When stuff happens, we get pay raises. We get big, huge pay raises. But they fight all year, and for years and years and years to get the pay that they want. And where was the union at then when they were fighting for pay raises with the city? When the police department, the fire department kept wanting this, the fire department takes their 2.5%. But where were we at when the police department kept fighting for years, and I had to go behind the scenes and keep fighting just to get the police department? But then here comes a riot, and the police department was satisfied when the riot happened. Then negotiations happened behind closed doors, and we gave them that big, huge pay raise, right? Now, election comes, and we got to pay off, we got to get to our city employees, because we want those city employees to vote for us. So how can we make those city employees happy? Well, we got to give them a big pay raise and a $2,000 bonus. If y'all can't see that it's political, then I don't know what the hell to tell you. But we could preach to the choir all day till we blew in the face. This is a whole different political move. So I say it should be election time every year, so then the city employees can get bonuses and get the pay and the increases that they deserve.
All right, anyone else here to speak tonight?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Pooja Dada. I am the labor representative for the American Federation of State City and Municipal Employees, so I am the labor representative for the city workers. I am here to tell you that these sorts of bonuses are being looked at all over the state. I am a statewide representative negotiating contracts for cities and counties all over the state of South Dakota. All kinds of folks are looking at bonuses right now. Folks are having a hard time retaining and hiring new people on. This is an issue that every industry is facing, whether it's private or public sector. I assure you, I'm standing here as a union rep. My vote cannot be bought, but what I am here to represent are my workers, and what I'm here to ask you for is to make sure that the folks doing the work of the city, doing the work of making sure the streets are getting plowed, the sewers are getting cleaned, the water is getting cleaned, these folks are allowed to be paid what they're worth, right? They need this. This is not a time where we look at the politics of a situation. This is a time where we look at what is good for the workers. So I'm not going to take any more of your time, but I am encouraging you guys to vote for this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pooja. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight?
Hello.
Good evening.
I haven't been here for a while, but that doesn't stop me from coming even now. As a matter of fact, it encourages me more. You're talking about giving people $2,000. That's cool. I don't care. I really don't. If you want it and you get it, maybe you'll do a better job. Maybe you won't, maybe you'll have better vacations, I don't know. I don't get vacations. I'm a street advocate. I don't get to make money to get a car fixed. I have my '95 Plymouth Grand Voyager sitting at home, stuck in second gear for three years. I need $2,500. I got them down to $1,500 to get it fixed. Well, lo and behold, something happened with the engine area. I don't know if it's a gasket or what. I don't have $2,000 to put it in shop to get it fixed. Now, I'm down on the streets for 30 years here in Sioux Falls, 22 years East Coast. I'm not counting prison workers, schoolings, nothing. I'm talking street advocate. I need my wheels to do your jobs. I don't get paid to do your jobs. Nobody's offered me money to do your jobs. I'm on housing, food stamps, general heating assistance, the whole works. I make less than $850 a month. My retirement money is $222 a month. That shows you how much I had been allowed to work while I'm raising all these kids and these adults in town. So I'm going to ask you to take it upon yourselves somehow, come up with a way. I'm asking you here, I'm asking our people, I'm asking anybody. I can't pull a paycheck, or I'll lose my assistance covering and my housing and my roof. But I'm asking you to help find a garage, and I go to 12th Street Auto as a rule. I use Napa Auto Parts, I do Interstate Batteries. I go to Grand.
Catherine, you got to keep it about the topic at hand, which is.
Well, what I'm saying is I need money to do these things.
I know you need money.
So I need somebody to help me out. I don't get that $2,000. I'm not on the payroll. But I need a set of wheels. And I have a handicapped son that goes to life escape. I need to get back forth to him. That's an emergency, a family emergency. So I don't care what you do with everybody else, and I tell you these things because this is my life. I'm the one down there on the streets, and I've been doing a dag-on good job. And I've been abused by the police officers in different counties and stuff like that. I've been held, been told lies and stuff, and people trying to get me locked up and everything else. Well, guess what? I'm still here, I ain't locked up, and I'm not going to get locked up. I've been offered a job in our county here, and I won't do it because somebody else will screw up under me and I'll have to take the blame for it. So I'll stay on the street work, but I expect you, and I ask you, help me get my vehicle fixed. I don't have the money for this. It's only a '95. Well, I mean, come on, beggars can't be choosy, but still, I can't even afford another car. That's all I got to say. Have a good night.
All right, thanks. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Mike Zer to Sioux Falls. Just stay on the top. I think we can take all those accusations off the floor. I think just talk policy for a minute. I mean, I think, trying to think. Are we piecing this thing together? Do we have to? If we pass this ordinance to create the policy, this ordinance, do we have to pass the appropriation ordinance? Or can we piece it together as time goes fly? I mean, do we spread it out over time? Speaking of layers, I mean, so get back to, should the city government itself compete with small businesses, and we're all struggling? And I just think, if this is the taxpayers' money, should we, could we actually pass this ordinance and then vote down the appropriation and adopt some resolution going forward to talk about those bonuses and stuff like that? I mean, I just think, when it's all said and done, I think we can find a compromise here. I think the mayor is correct in his assessment that we do have to create a good environment for the workers, public workers. At the same time, we have to be careful of the taxpayer funds. So I mean, do we really have to fund this program today, or can we just piecemeal it over the next three or four months as we discuss the next contract? Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mike. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
James Johnson. Just wanted to sort of echo what the first gentleman said, that the concerns are a concern for me, if any of those concerns are in fact valid. I don't know if they are. I haven't looked at the ordinance myself to understand the level of detail he was going into as far as the appointees and things like that. But aside from that, passing the ordinance to give the pay raises is, I think, a good move, but as you and I have talked previously one-on-one, the issue I see is more of an economic societal issue here at the local level. And so hopefully, your HR department, or even you folks as policymakers as you go forward, will take into account that we are in a new world. We are in a new sort of situation here with employment, with how employees react to different sort of incentives, and what sort of things are going to encourage them to seek employment or to even stay on the job. And so hopefully, you actually meet with your HR reps, or whoever it happens to be, or other business leaders around the community, especially you in your particular position, or any of your council members as well, meeting with business leaders around the community to kind of get a better understanding of what they're seeing on the ground, and understand what sort of incentives are actually going to work to get people into the jobs that are open. There's a lot of people moving into town. I was one of them, came here last June, still unemployed since then, lots of interviews, but I'm just one person, but I probably represent thousands of people who have moved here over the last year or two to look for a better start in a freer city, in a freer state. But the situation is that the incentives and the programs and the way the policies are working at the corporate and the public sector level are not matching to get you people in those positions. And you'll see that 1.6% or 1.4% unemployment rate, you need to look at the labor force participation rate, which is much higher, or not participating rate is much higher than that. So I mean, if you look at the actual numbers, it's up to a quarter across the nation. Here locally, I don't know what it is, because I haven't looked at the numbers locally, but you go to the Department of Labor, you look at the labor force participation, it's up to a quarter of people are not working, they're not in the job market, they're not collecting unemployment or anything like that. So just a matter of going out there, meeting with the business leaders, developing an overarching plan to get people into jobs, get the economy going here locally, and then you'll have more money to be able to spend on programs, spend on incentives for the employees, or whatever the case might be, expanding infrastructure. You know, it all works together. So I mean, pass the ordinance today, I'm in favor, but also I want to encourage you folks to go and do the homework of figuring out what's clicking in people's heads and how to get them into work. Thank you.
All right, thanks, James. Anyone else to speak on this item tonight? All right, seeing no other public input, let's get a, well, go for questions, I guess, first.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Knightzert to approve. I'm going to give the Florida Councilor Knightzert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Director O'Toole, fabulous presentation, really good job in, I think, setting it up and making the case. Related to this particular item, we're seeing this with many employers. People want more than money. People want to be able to have experiences, they want to have leaves of absence to spend time with their little ones, and so this is just something that we need to do to stay competitive. So this one's easy. The only other thing that I really feel like I need to say is, last week and this week, I wish I could say I was surprised, but I'm not. I've seen some really ugly input, and I just feel like I need to come to the defense of those who are not running for office. I'm term limited, I'm not running for office. First of all, it's a smear to our employees to make the accusation that they're bought and paid for. The second thing is, everything we vote on benefits someone. Everything. I don't care what it is, a liquor license, a rezoning, whatever, everything we do benefits someone. By this logic, we would literally have to close down city government for 60 days before an election and not hold any council meetings. It's completely absurd. And then just on a practical level, let me just tell you, there's 1,300 city employees, a serious minority of them are not citizens of Sioux Falls, so we're probably under 1,000. It might be 700 or 800, something like that. And then if you assume that all of them, let's say that they all vote, which I assure you, they don't all vote, they vote just as much as everybody else. You have 185,000 people, 120,000 registered voters. If this is what you're going to do to buy votes, it's a really stupid way to do it. You're going to tick off a lot more people than you're going to please. So let's just stop with this nonsense and smearing everybody and accusing people of bribes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Selberg. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Director O'Toole, very good presentation, very thorough, and I've appreciated the visits we've had as I've tried to learn more about kind of how this was put together and some background on it. These are challenging times in the labor market, and in times like these, you need to get creative, you need to think outside the box, especially nowadays, just to compete. In my mind, the city needs to do everything possible to keep the best talent possible. And again, compensation, incentives, whatever it might be, is a key part of that conversation. When you look down at some of the stats that were just shared concerning employment indicators, so we've got a 44% increase in vacancies in the last, since 2018. We've got a 55% increase in the number of interviews since 2018, 11% decrease in employment applications, a 41% increase in hires since 2018, and a 38% increase in separation since 2018. Yeah, I would say some things are talking to us, like we need to do the best we can to keep the best folks that we can. So with these type of indicators and numbers in mind, this program makes perfect sense to me. I agree with a lot of what Counselor Knightzert said on the other part of that subject, so I'll leave that part B, but I do believe in times like these, we need to be proactive, and I appreciate those of you who have been on this subject. Thank you.
Counselor Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make kind of a general statement for the next few items. I think they're all lumped in together in some aspects. You know, we're in a new paradigm in this world, and it is rapidly changing, rapidly changing. And so I think this attempt by the administration to shore up our workforce, who takes care of the citizens, they're the ones that plow the streets, that go after the murderers, that put out your fires. These are the workers that we hire to do our job, and they might need a little bump right now because of the way things are going. This is something new that we're going into in the next few years, and it might not ever change. There's certainly people that would like to go back to the old adversarial relationships that the city employees had with the administration. I, for one, do not ever want to go there. Being a union representative back in the day, I know what it's like to file an unfair labor practice against the city. It's not fun. It's just not fun to do that. So today, and I will compliment the mayor on the one Sioux Falls, and I don't compliment him much on that, but I will compliment him on that now. This is what it means, one Sioux Falls. All 1,300 city employees, city council members, administration are in trying to make this city better. And if we have to reach out from time to time to make some adoptions and some contracts, I, for one, am willing. And if we have to reach out from time to time to make some adoptions and some contracts, I, for one, am willing to do that. So I intend to vote for affirmative on the next five items. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion amongst the council? Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll go to Counselor Kylie, and then I'll go to you, Counselor Erickson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This, what this is about is one word. It's called inflation. We wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't because the current rate of inflation and the timing of inflation. So if we want to blame the timing on this, let's blame it on the timing of inflation. Otherwise, we would not, would not be here this evening. It's, you know, over the, and let me just address a little bit the, the kind of the mentality that if I don't have it, therefore they should not have it. You know, I can, I can remember, I was a teacher for 33 years, and I watched with interest the negotiations of the city employees at that time. But I also realized that they didn't get it, odds of never going to get it, that you need to create an environment that then encourages my employer to increase the pay scale and the benefits to help retain me or, or my colleagues. So I just wanted to address that very briefly as well. You know, our residents expect top-notch service. You know, to deliver that top-notch service, we have to have top-notch employees. We have to retain the employees we have, and we have to attract additional employees, because this is a growing city. The needs and the services are just going to continue to, to expand. It was mentioned when, during first reading that this is an extraordinary move. Well, I would say it's an extraordinary time based on inflation. Therefore, I think this is a, a necessary move. It was also stated during first reading, this puts us in a difficult, and this really puts us in a hard position. Well, as counselors, it is our job to cast votes, not on just the easy votes or items, but on the difficult ones as well, too. And it was stated by individuals during first reading, who, by the way, have often expressed concern about low wages in the city and in the state of South Dakota, that it's not an emergency. Well, the point is, is we don't want to wait until it is an emergency. Because at that point, citizens are not receiving the services that they have come to expect. So we have to be proactive and act now. So I intend to support this measure, is I do view it as supporting our employees and our staff. They do a great job. But I view it more as supporting our citizens by ensuring that we have qualified staff in place to deliver the services that they expect to receive. I encourage my colleagues to vote yes on this item. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, a motion to amend. I'll make a motion to amend by adding the following to the list of funds supplemented. Department, quote, general fund transfer to housing fund, end quote.
Counselor Erickson, I'm going to, can I interrupt you real, can I interrupt this amendment? This might be the amendment I think you want to bring forward on the next item, I believe. Item 51.
Oh, did I do the wrong one? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, we're good. Sorry.
Yep, no problem. All right. Any other discussion on, on this item from the council? All right. If not, let's just take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right. That item passes. Seven to zero. Now we'll move to item 51.
Item 51 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations to fund the full-time employee retention incentive pay and compensation and benefit study. Sponsor is the mayor.
Sean, good evening.
Good evening. This follows the previous topic that was addressed by Director O'Toole, so I'll keep this very brief. The supplemental request in front of you totals an amount of $2.49 million, and it's intended to cover the retention incentive that was spoken about here over the last several minutes. It also includes $100,000, which would accelerate the comp and benefit study to which Director O'Toole also spoke to. The amounts that are specified by department are based on where the, the, the home department for each of the employees, and that's how it's been calculated. It is funded by the unassigned fund balance carried forward into 2022. While we have not yet completed the audit and provided the end-of-year financial presentations, we'll, you will see at that time that the general fund has a balance right now of about 37% of the total budget. We tend to, to focus on, by policy, having a 25% threshold. And that increase has been driven primarily by the increase in sales taxes that were experienced in 2021. Unless you have any questions, I'll stand by. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 51?
Hello again. I'm David Zokitis Stell, and I'm here to talk about Agenda Item 51. You see some corrections here, because this is related to the topic I gave on February 15th about Agenda Item 39 at the time. The city proposes to give full-time employees a $2,000 retention bonus. That's the proposal under conversation. You know, a retention bonus can be valuable sometimes if you've got attrition problems. It's great if you've got a troubled project. But as far as I can tell, the city does not currently have a nutrition problem. There's a reference there on South Dakota, and it says not very many jobs are listed as being open. Again, this looks like the, people are trying to buy votes. I'm not in favor of that. Again, that, that's a big impact because not very many people vote in the mayoral election, and city employees, a thousand of them, plus spouses and family. Could be quite a few votes. And now something that's kind of fishy about this deal is it looks like it was, was made long before it came to city council. Saw some information online that said that probably decided five weeks before the last city council meeting. Kind of fishy. One of the problems with, with this change is that employees were told of the bonus before the bonus was approved. Hard to promise a chicken before the egg hatches. And one problem with early announcements is that it makes conversation and disagreement more difficult. If you disagree, you might come out as being alienating your employees. We don't really want that. So I'd recommend that you vote against it and have time and nature to relax and enjoy life and oh, yeah, thanks for Kellaland, for getting the story on the air, and a few other people for their information, so that we are all more informed about what's going on in city government. And there you go. Enjoy the earth.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right. Let's move on to a motion then, and I think there are a couple amendments that will follow, so. Oh, you want to speak on it? Come on up, man.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. So inflation is a problem. I think I said that the last time. This isn't a chicken and the egg problem, because private wealth is, wealth, wealth is created in the, in the private sector. And so these bonuses that are being talked about are being paid by taxes from the, on the private sector. And the impact of inflation there is compressed margins and lower profits. And so you're taking a bigger piece of the pie. And I guess I wanted to come back to something Counselor Sale had said in his last statement. Your job as elected officials is to actually pursue that adversarial process in negotiation with the public employees' union. And so there, if you don't have an adversarial process, who represents the taxpayer in this case? I don't necessarily want to see services degraded, but to Mr. Zokitis's point, a lot of percentages were presented by Counselor, or repeated by Counselor Selberg. And, but I'd like to see the absolute numbers. If the absolute numbers are 22 openings, 17 of which are internships, how big of a problem do we actually have in the city for employment? How tough is it actually to hire someone or to hire high-quality individuals? And what were the actual base rates for, you know, the employees lost and retention being the problem and the number of interviews given? Those absolute numbers would be more informative than a percentage number to the public. Kind of, you know, there's lies, damn lies, and statistics. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now we will move to, we'll get a motion, and then I think we have some amendments we're going to talk through. So is there a motion on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Counselor Erickson, I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you. Now it's my turn. I appreciate it. I'm going to make a motion to amend by adding the following to the list of funds supplemented. Department, general fund transfer to housing fund, funding source, general fund, unassigned balance, in the amount of $13,000. And additionally, supplement department general fund transfer to storm drainage fund, funding source, general fund, unassigned fund balance, in the amount of $33,000.
Second, Counselor Kylie.
All right. A motion by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Counselor Kylie. Any discussion on that?
Just to unpack it for, yeah, just unpack it real quick. This truly was just based on statements I made last week with wanting it to come out of, come out of the general fund and having it all into the same consistency as the rest. So I did work with Jim David and Director Pritchett to make sure the language made sense and that there wasn't any unintended consequences. This amendment is not saying anything was done wrong previously, but just more than one way to do it, and this is just a way that I wanted to have consistency, so I'd ask for your vote.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any discussion on the amendment by Counselor Erickson there? All right. Hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right. That amendment passes. Seven to zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Counselor Starr?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to amend by inserting the following whereas is, or whereas clauses. Whereas the ability of the city of Sioux Falls to be responsive, innovative, and effective service depends on the outstanding performance of its city employees. Whereas the residents of Sioux Falls benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of the highly-trained city employees. And whereas the 2022 Employer of Choice Plan will retain and attract employees in this competitive job market.
All right. Motion by Counselor Starr. We have a second for that?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Second by Counselor Nightzert. Counselor Starr?
Yep. Just, I wanted to add to this that the appreciation that this policymaking body has for the employees that we have, we've had some tough discussions over the last couple of weeks of what is and what isn't, and where we're moving forward, but whatever action we take tonight, I want to make sure that the, the employees understand that that we value the service that they provide to our residents of our city.
All right. Other discussion on that amendment? Counselor Nightzert, go ahead.
Just off the cuff, I, I will support this because I, I also like the message that it sends, that it reinforces what is absolutely true, that our citizens count on our, on our outstanding city employees to provide them good city services, and that's why they should care about their retention.
All right. Other discussion on this item? All right. Let's vote on that amendment then, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right. That amendment passes seven to zero. So we're back to the main motion as it's been amended twice now. Other discussion on that? Counselor Starr?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did probably have a, a couple of questions for Director Pritchett if I could, because I think you handled this side of it. My concern by not putting this in the base from a budgetary process is we're going to have this same problem next year, because as starting in 2023, our employees are going to be behind anywhere from 6.5% that we were talking with AFSMI, down to the 2%. So, I mean, when we start, well, you've obviously started the budget process long before. It's, people don't understand the amount of work that it takes, and again, we're appreciative of that, but we're going to be even further behind by not including this money in the base at this point. In, neither of us are economists. We've stated that in the past. But we're not going to see prices for goods and services drop by that percentage that we've seen in, in inflation. In inflationary times, we normally see things stay. We're not going to see a recessionary time where prices drop. So how do we assure employees moving forward that we're going to take care of them into the next budget year without including it in the base salaries?
Well, I, I think actually the, the intent was in order for us to consider this, to give some time to, to assess how long or the longevity of the inflation. Certainly, there's been discussion about increasing interest rates by the Federal Reserve, Goldman Sachs, all of them are predicting some level of increases here over the course of the next year, as many as five or seven times. And so it will give us an opportunity to monitor the inflation rate as we go into the budgeting process, as we go into the benefits and comp study that, that Director O'Toole referenced as well. Obviously, that will not be available at the time of, of budgeting, but we will give consideration to where we sit. And then as we go into collective bargaining in the future years as well. So we are making this one-time corrective, corrective action in order to kind of deal with what we know is existing right now. We always have the opportunity to continue to assess that as we go forward.
Well, I guess, and, and this is more of a, a statement, too, is that we're going to get to '23, and the contract, current contracts don't expire till the end of '23, so we're going to be left hanging to not keep people where they're at. So we're going to have to at least plan for at least similar bonuses in 2023, because the wage in our study won't be ready before we start negotiating the contract going forward from 2023. So it just, for me, it leaves us kind of hanging, the employees hanging. We're trying to retain employees, but then we're telling them, we'll give them cash now, but we don't know what we'll do in the future, where we could have done a deal for '22 and '23 to get us through the end of the collective bargaining agreement. And that's where my concern's been through this, is that we, we have numbers and we're taken care of today. We're not providing the assurance that that money is going to come in '23, which is going to be, if we say it's needed now, it's definitely going to be needed a year from now just to keep people where they're at. So we've kind of left them hanging with promises of, we'll take care of you in the future. And then the other side of it, we're trying to say, provide assurances and retention and keep employees where they're at. I think the employees have earned this bonus in 2022, but we've got to plan for it to give it to them again in 2023, just to keep them where they're at.
And I think your point is salient. I think, you know, we, we've gone through a period of what we call low-inflation steadiness, that we are easier for us to plan around. It's easier to negotiate into longer-term agreements. When you have rapid escalation, you know, we could continue to accelerate, we could decelerate. And we don't know exactly how that's going to look over the next several months, but our ability to be flexible and nimble and make decisions that are a little bit more responsive are a great opportunity during these times. It's like we've talked about, this is a unique circumstance, and it may continue to be unique as we move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Other discussion on the motion now that's been amended? Counselor Nightzert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll just indulge me for a minute or two. I've talked a lot about this at the informational, at the first reading, so I, I do want to go over some notes that I did take. So really, what this comes down to is I've been debating in my mind, is this necessary and is it a good use of tax dollars? It is an extraordinary proposal, and I did say that. It's not something we've done very often. Maybe it's the first time we've done this in this exact form. I know we've, we've done something like this inside of actual labor contracts. That was before my time, I believe. But this is, this is an extraordinary measure, but we are in extraordinary times. I, I want to make something really clear. I, I'm a big champion of our employees. They're awesome. They provide excellent customer service, and we've talked about that. And I, I also want to acknowledge, I, I know all citizens are feeling the pain of inflation. I am. We all are. It's, it's, it's getting all of us. With everything we do, we should be doing what's in the best interest of citizens. But it, it's important to note that doing what's in the best interest of citizens and doing what's best for the city employees are not mutually exclusive. They go hand in hand. When we're fully staffed with the best and brightest, you're going to get your best service. You're going to get your streets plowed, the police are going to protect you. They're going to do all those things that, that you need. When we're not fully staffed, service levels are going to suffer, timeliness is going to suffer, and it, it costs us tax dollars to bring people online and train them and to lose people. train them, and to lose people. Do we have an emergency? No. But from the internal data that I've been able to look at, provided by HR, and what was talked about tonight, there's troubling signs on the horizon. There certainly is. Attrition is increasing, jobs are going unfilled. And we don't live in a vacuum. The city's an employer like anyone else. We're seeing what major employers are doing. We're competing with all of those employers, and we're, and we have to make sure that we're competitive. And I know the administration would acknowledge that maybe calling it a $2,000, a retention incentive, or whatever terminology you wish to use, may or may not have been the best way to frame it up. But really talking about it as kind of an inflation leveler is something that makes a lot more sense. And I think it's helpful if people kind of understand the constraints we work under. We're negotiating contracts, and therefore, you know, we're doing three-year cycles, so we don't have another one coming up until '24. So, we've already locked in what the COLAs are. Now, in most years, inflation is not moving a whole lot, so it kind of goes back to the mean. Maybe we get a little high, a little low, but we can adjust. But this is not most years. This is inflation we haven't seen in 40 years. I mean, just put that in perspective, I'm 43 years old. I was born in 1978. I was literally in diapers the last time inflation was this high. So, it's been a long time. This is, this is really a crazy environment. If we do nothing... Interesting. I think, there we go.
I blacked out there for a minute.
Uh-oh.
Do we pay the bill?
We need more light and power people in the city.
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
Do you want me to continue by candlelight?
You can keep talking if you want. You've got your notes there. Tom's taking a look at it. Go ahead.
Sure, yeah, no problem. There we go. So, this isn't perfect. I mean, I've really, I've really had to, had to think about it. You know, it's a big-ticket item. But really, in the end, as I've thought about it, what it really comes down to is, yes, we could do an increase right now, and we could build it into the budget, but there's a lot of uncertainty right now. Really, employers are having to do extraordinary things, and we're not immune from that. This is one way that we can react in a timely manner. We can make a big statement to employees. And just as important, we can make a statement to everyone else, this is somewhere that you want to work, in HR's terms, the Employer of Choice Plan. So, is this perfect? No. Would there, could we quibble about maybe some of the details? Sure, we could. But really, in the end, I said I wanted something extraordinary to justify something this extraordinary. And I think the inflation that we've seen, that we haven't seen in 40 years, is that thing. So with that, I'm going to support this tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on this? Counselor Sale?
A question for Director Pritchett. Did you pay the light bill?
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, seeing no other discussion here, let's call for a vote on this one, please.
Counselors Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero. We will move then to our next item, item 60, moved by amendment.
Item 60 is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding to the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and Local 814 of the International Association of Firefighters. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Ryan Sage from the Attorney's Office here to present the MOUs for the three collective bargaining units. Although I will say it's an adversarial process, our relationship is not adversarial with our unions. It's professional, it's cordial. They don't get everything they want from the administration. The administration does not always get everything they want from our bargaining units. But in extraordinary times, as you've all pointed out, we have adjusted, and we have gone through this MOU process to show our employees that we value them. This first memorandum of understanding will deal with the International Association of Firefighters, makes two amendments essentially, one with the lump sum payment and a referral incentive, so those in the firefighting industry can attract the talent that they know is out there and make them our employees, and we can keep them, continue providing the service for the city. The second is Article 22, which is essentially the union contract provision that then governs Chapter 39 for the vacation accruals that you have voted for. So, I want to thank Mark Schmidt for being here from the union, as well as Bo Mortensen was here, but he got called out to a fire call, so he's no longer here. But we do appreciate working with them through this process, and on behalf of the administration, I'd encourage your support for this MOU. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 60? All right, Counsel, you have any questions for Ryan on this item? All right, look for a motion then.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve this one. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Counselors Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 61, also moved by amendment.
Item 61 is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding among the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and the Police Officers and Sergeants, Sioux Falls Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 1, LC. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening again. We're back with the FOP memorandum of understanding. This one has one addition to it, as opposed to AFSMI and FIRE, with respect to the fact that police has recently changed to eight and 10-hour shifts. And so, we have a hire-back provision when someone is unable to fill their shift. So, we've worked very collaboratively with that union to come forward with a new language for Article 11. And I would like to thank President Holbeck, who's here on behalf of the union, and will be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you got any questions on this one?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve item 61. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Counselors Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Okay, that item passes seven to zero. And 62, moved by amendment.
Item 62 is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding to the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and Local 519 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening. Item 62 is for AFSMI, essentially incorporating everything you've just voted on with the other unions, with one addition where we amended the contract to remove some paid classifications that no longer exist. So, I'd like to thank Jason Ness, Tanner Corbin, and Dan Amen for being here on behalf of AFSMI, as well as Pooja Dada and Cooper Caraway. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Anyone from the public here to speak on 62 then? Counsel, you got any questions on this? All right, take a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen to approve 62. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Counselors Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Counselor Knightzert, we'll bring back Counselor Brecky, and we will move ahead with item 52.
Item 52 is a first reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving Amendment Number 1 to Monopoly Lease Agreement Number 163391. Recommendation, set a date a second reading for Tuesday, March 8, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening. Darren Freeze with the City of Sioux Falls, Public Works Water Division. Item 52 pertains to our tower lease program. I'd first like to start off with a brief overview of our program. I see some new faces since the last time I was up here talking about these. So, the water division leases space on top and inside of our four elevated storage tanks and one city-owned monopole. This space for antenna, this space is for antennas, transmit and receive equipment, and cabling used in communications such as wireless internet cellular, two-way radio, along with city SCADA, city IT, and emergency services. So, to be clear, we rent space on these sites, not the towers themselves, nor the precious resources inside, because we do not lease out our water. Our program reviews construction plans and structural analysis. We negotiate terms and pricing. We oversee equipment installations and removal of equipment, all while protecting the structural integrity and coatings of these pieces of critical infrastructure. All three items have been reviewed by our program and by our legal team. We have given due diligence and feel both tenant and landlord will benefit from them. And item 52 specifically is an amendment allowing a cellular provider to add additional equipment to our monopole. And everything's been vetted. It's been through legal, and we would appreciate your support on this item.
All right, thanks, Dan. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 52? Counsel, you got any questions for Dan here tonight?
Move to approve, Kylie.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Knightzert?
So, I'm familiar with our, our water towers, but what do we, what is our monopole for that we own?
The monopole is over by Fire Station 5 on East 10th Street.
Okay.
And when that fire station was built, it was around the same time as we lost, I want to say it was our Cliff Avenue Water Tower. So, we had all the telecom on there that we had people in lease for. So, we put the monopole up when we built the fire station to transition everybody from the water tower over to that monopole. So, the water department doesn't own it like we do the towers, but I got the responsibility of managing it.
Okay, so we had to fulfill the lease, so we essentially had to put them on something?
Yes, and plus, the city IT and our SCADA systems run a lot off of those, so it was a benefit to us as well.
We use it as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Same with the water towers. We use them heavily.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan here? All right, we got a motion, a second, and no other discussion. Let's take a vote. And just to clarify, to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, March 8 is the motion.
Counselor Member Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 53 is a first reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving Amendment Number 1 to Water Tank Lease Agreement Number 163392. Recommendation, set a date a second reading for Tuesday, March 8, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
It's essentially same thing as item 52. One of the cellular providers wants to rearrange and kind of do a one-for-one swap on our Western Heights Water Tower by Roosevelt, and everything looks good, and it's been vetted by legal, and we're looking for your approval.
All right, thanks, Dan. Anyone from the public here to speak on 53? Counsel, you got any questions on this item? All right, I look for a motion to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, March 8.
So moved. Knightzert?
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Knightzert, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Counselors Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
All right, that passes, was that seven to zero? Counselor Erickson fell off. All right, seven to zero. Next item, 54.
Item 54 is a first reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving an agreement-related determination of water tank lease agreement Number 163393. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 8, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
So, all three of these came as a result of a couple of very large cellular companies during a merger. So, they had some redundant equipment. So, they terminated two leases, and they amended two to modify their equipment. This one specifically is a termination at Menlo Water Tower by Sanford Hospital. This tenant, in order to transfer their outbuilding, they have a really nice building, and in order for them to transfer that asset to the city, the legal teams had them sign a lease termination agreement, which then turns that property over to us. It changes hands nice and clean. So, this was the way we had to do that, and we would be looking for your support on this as well.
All right, thanks, Dan. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, any questions on this one? Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, March 8. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that one, please.
Counselors Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 55 is a first reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 111, alcoholic beverages. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 8, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here tonight to share with you the proposed amendments to Chapter 111, alcoholic beverages. Finance Director Sean Pritchett is also here and will speak to a portion of these amendments. In 2006, a waiting list was established for the on-sale liquor licenses, because at that time, there were no, or there were more applicants and licenses were available. In 2016, a waiting list for off-sale liquor licenses was established for the same reason. In 2019, City Council voted to discontinue adding names to those lists, and when all names have been cleared, Sections 111.012 and 111.015 are to be repealed, and the waiting list will cease to exist. These amendments before you tonight will establish a lottery system to replace those waiting lists. Anytime new liquor licenses for either type are available, lottery will be held to select future recipients. The proposed language was modeled after the medical cannabis lottery process. So, when licenses become available, the city will publish an invitation for lottery applications on the city's website, stating the deadline to apply and where applications will be received. There will be no less than 30 days between the invitation to apply and the opening of that application window. Notice of the lottery will be posted on the city's website at least 24 hours in advance of that lottery being conducted. And the lottery will be open to the public, just as it was for the medical cannabis. Lottery applicants that are selected to continue on with the process will be notified by email, which will include information that outlines their next steps and any required deadlines that they must meet. The final step in the process remains unchanged. The lottery recipients would receive, or would be required to submit a uniform alcoholic beverage application and the full license fee. That license request would be scheduled before the council for a notice of hearing and a hearing date. After receiving council approval, those applications would go to the State Department of Revenue for issuance. Kind of a brief synopsis, but that concludes my portion of it, and Sean Pritchett is also going to come forward and finish the presentation. I will be available for questions after that.
All right, thanks, Jamie. The floor is yours, Sean.
Thank you, Counsel. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. Again, I'm going to take a little bit of a step back and talk a little bit about how allocation of liquor licenses occurs at the state level, because there are some changes that are being proposed at the legislative level that will likely change the number of licenses that will be allocated in the future. So, under current state statute, we receive two licenses, communities do for the first thousand in population, and then as they grow, they receive an additional license for every 1,500. During a centennial, or a decent, decennial census year, I'll get that right, we're allowed to use 100% of the census-based population for the City of Sioux Falls. However, during those even-numbered years in between the census, we're only allowed to use 90% of the census-estimated populations. And it's that 90% that has really kind of changed dramatically how many licenses we are made available in a given year. So, to kind of explain that, and to show you what occurs, the orange line there shows you what 100% of our population estimate is, based on either the population estimates of the decennial census, and then the 90% population estimates. And you'll see that's for the last 10 years, and then forward-looking for the next 10 years as well. And what happens during those even-numbered years, based on the current state statute, is that after we get past a census year, such as 2020, so this year, we're allowed to issue 19 licenses, which is an extraordinary number, given where we've been in the last several years, we go back to that estimated population. Well, by dropping 10% of our population in the calculation of how many licenses we're allowed to issue, we essentially lose the opportunity of 13 to 14 licenses during that time period. So, what happens for 2022's population essentially is we have to grow somewhere in the neighborhood of 23,000 people before we'll be issued one more license after this year. And so, based on this equation that's been set up at the state level, we really see a factor like this. So, if you look at the last 10 years, these are the number of licenses that were, we were eligible to issue. So, in 2012, 2014, none. It starts to increase, and then boom, you hit a census year, and you get a whole flood of licenses that come through. Under current state statute, and based on population projections for the community, we will not be able to issue other licenses until 2026, when we could issue two. We would have five available in 2028. And again, a census year in 2030, we would project 21 licenses available for the community. in 2030, we would project 21 licenses available for the community. What happens as a result of this is, what you're seeing is an arbitrary reduction of supply of licenses during those even-numbered years, which increases demand, which pushes up the price on a private level, or the private sector, on those licenses that are available, not through the city, but being transferred between entities and businesses in the community. And then again, you see the flood occurring in those years, trying to make up for, based on where those census estimates go. There is, as I noted, there is legislation pending at the state level related to this issue. This was actually brought forward by the industry, or retailers' industry, but essentially what it will do is allow 100% of US census-based estimates in the intervening years. It's currently passed the Senate unanimously, it passed the House Local Government Committee this morning unanimously, and will be heading to the House floor. Since it has no direct fiscal impact to the state, in fact, it probably has positive fiscal impact, because it will allow more licenses to be issued more quickly on a more even schedule throughout, which will inevitably probably lead to more sales taxes, both for the municipalities as well as the state. It'll also provide consistent revenue to the city as we sell these licenses. We wouldn't see such a large uptick in once every 10 years, as opposed to just having them issued on a more regular basis. So if you look here, the blue bars again is what we are projected, based on current state law. If it were to have changed, if it does change based on Senate Bill 156, you can see what occurs on the orange bars there, is that we will be more evenly distributing five to six licenses every two years, and that would have been even in the past as well. So it will provide more consistency as we move forward there. In 2020, based on the proposal and the ordinance in front of you, we're projecting at this time that six would go into the lottery, and this will be consistent with our projections based on the new laws that are being proposed, of five to six licenses being issued every two years in the community. As you can see, in the ordinance, we did include a new category, which allows up to two licenses to be issued for city-owned facilities. One of the challenges that we have is that we have a variety of city-owned facilities, but no provision currently in state law to designate certain licenses. But we, as a community, have the opportunity to decide how we are going to designate licenses, and how they're going to be issued. So included with this ordinance change includes two licenses that could be issued or designated for city-owned facilities. They must be acquired by our third-party managers, so they would not be specifically or directly owned by the city, but rather by our third parties. They would have to follow the same application procedures and fees that are applied to businesses, and then it would also, we would addend the management agreement to require that there be any transfer should we cease or terminate our relationship with that partner, and that it must be transferred to the subsequent partner. Or if no subsequent partner exists, they would be reverted back to the city for reissuance to other individuals or entities. Ultimately, the council would have approval of the issuance of these licenses, as they do with all licenses, and additionally, you would have to approve any changes to management agreements that would include the issuance of a liquor license to a city-owned facility. Based on the 19 licenses that we currently have available, there were 18 applicants that were on the waiting list. I believe 11 of them were still interested in receiving them. So originally, we were anticipating only one license would be available at this time, because we're at 11, I believe, that are in the process, not fully through the process, but have shown interest and are in the process of applying. With two licenses designated to city-owned facilities, that would, again, leave six licenses that would be available for lottery, once all the applications have been kind of confirmed and approved from the waiting list, just to ensure that we were able to meet all those applicants, as well as to close down that waiting list for future use. So with that, I know Jamie and I would be available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 55 tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
James Johnson, just had a couple of questions, since this is on first reading, just posing some questions to take into consideration for potential amendments. With this lottery process, does it take into account sort of a residual system where, say for example, ABC Liquor gets the license this year, do they go back in the lottery again the next year, and they might potentially get the next license the next year, to where eventually there'll be a system where certain participants won't ever get a license, for example? My other question would be, what happens when the licenses are disposed of? Do they go back into the lottery system at that point, and then they get recycled through that process? Rhetorical questions at this point, just wanted to pose those to you, just to kind of consider for potential amendments in the second reading. Thank you.
All right, thank you James. Any other people here to speak on this item? All right, counsel, questions for Jamie or for Sean tonight on this one? Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Director Pritchett, I think his first question, or second question's easy to answer, is that they're actually resold on the open market, correct? There's no changes to that as part of this proposal, is there?
Correct. I would defer to probably Jamie to speak to that question, but typically, I know from my own awareness, they're typically sold, and there's a transfer fee that's entailed in that.
They become an asset of the business.
They are, yeah.
They become retirement policies a lot of times, depending on the owner, as the price goes up over time. I'm interested in the city facilities part of this. Are we stuck on just city, or are we looking at any government entity for those two licenses? Say the county, or state, or, can't imagine the school would be looking for a liquor license anytime soon, but might make some of those band concerts a lot better.
We hadn't contemplated other ones, other than city-owned facilities. It tends to be, you know, city-owned facilities tend to have, the city tends to have more of these type of facilities, where you would have a complementary reason to have a liquor license for those.
I just think of the Old Courthouse Museum pops into my head right away, because they have an event just about every weekend, and if I flip back in my agenda, I could see how many one-days we approve for them just tonight, let alone throughout the course of the year. So I'm trying to balance the cost of the license for that partner, whether it's city-owned facilities versus what they pay in fees for one-days during the course of the year, and some of the times when they forget to apply on time, and things that we do to take care of them. So it's an interesting way to maybe solve some of that as well. Does the Denny have its own liquor license currently, or how does that work?
They do have their own liquor license currently, so there are special conventions that are licenses. We have two, that's under separate provision, so that's what they operate under.
Perfect, thank you. And then, the other thing, again, did you run any numbers on the pavilions, one that comes to mind right away with the number of events that they have, and the number of one-day licenses, and having a beer and wine license currently? I'm a little confused on how you explained, they wouldn't be able to show it on their books as an asset if it has to refer, if it has to come back to the city as, if we change management companies, or, so is it really an asset for them? Wouldn't it be an asset? I mean, the cost, I guess, is where I'm trying to justify what would work in a situation like that.
Well, we have a lot of partners that we work with that are nonprofits, and the benefit they have is that they are able to apply for the one-days. But we also have partners that are not, that are for-profit entities, that we hire as management agencies, and they are not eligible to apply unless they own a liquor license. So I think our first priority will be looking at those more for-profit relationships. Someone such as the Washington Pavilion would have the opportunity to enter the lottery, so they, and because they're a little bit different, their accounts are not our accounts, we don't own their accounts. So if they acquire it, they would be freely able to transfer it as needed, and hold it as an asset, just as any other business would be able to.
So potentially, they could move it to whatever the next management company was, or they could sell it, just like you would on the open market with any other license? That answers that. No, I'm not going to do that. Never mind, that's good for me.
Okay.
Additional questions for Sean on this item, while we have him here? Counselor Brecky.
It's not for Sean, for the city attorney, but Sean might be needed, so he might just hang around. Questions for the city attorney, this plan, pragmatically, it makes sense to me, but three things come to my mind, you know, immediately, in terms of raising red flags about the legality of it. And the first question I have is, are there any other cities in the state of South Dakota that are using the lottery system to distribute licenses?
I'm not aware of any. A lot of them don't face the same challenges that we do as far as allocation. To my knowledge, and Jamie may know, excuse me, I'm not sure that any had a waiting list like we did, like we used to. And so, this is a way to, this kind of recognizes the unique challenges we have in Sioux Falls, as opposed to the other communities in the state.
Okay, well, that's one question. The other question was, you know, I guess the question I have is whether it's really even a true lottery when you exempt the city out, and then allow this relationship between the city and its independent managers to have, take preference, you know, over anybody else in getting the licenses. And is there, you know, I think there's some legal concerns about that. I mean, I'm not expecting to answer all these tonight, I'll try to work with you in between times, but I am going to be wanting, you know, some legal advice on that, those issues, you know. Again, this business of showing preference to a private entity through the city, and then just actually exempting the city out of the lottery, does it make it a true lottery? And then, the lottery in and of itself. I think there's a problem with that, you know, it's called an unlawful delegation of legislative authority. We're actually taking our legislative decision-making process, and we're giving it away to chance, to a game of chance. And I had some concerns about when we did it with cannabis, and my concerns are even more heightened when we try to do it with liquor, because I think that there is law out there where that's been tried before, and it was found to be unlawful. So I will, you know, we're working with you to get those concerns, but I did want to raise them, because that is going to impact my vote on this when it ultimately comes before us. But I will move it forward for a second read.
All right, other questions? If not, move to a motion, so we can get into any discussion that you may have. Second date, excuse me, the motion, we have set a date, a second reading for Tuesday, March 8th.
Move to approve.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen on that. Any discussion now amongst the council on this? All right, hearing none, let's vote on it, please.
Counselmember Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero, we'll move to our next item.
Item 58 is a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 0015913, 2021, Wolf's Edition, sponsors the mayor.
Evening again. This is a petition to annexation in the southeast quarter of the city, located just south of East 41st Street, and just to the east of Veterans Parkway. It's approximately 5.9 acres in size, and the purpose here is to construct future residential. With that, I can take any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on 58? Counsel, you got any questions on this one?
Move approval?
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen, any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero, item 59, please.
Item 59 is a resolution declaring certain property of the city surplus and approving inspection and salvage agreement, sponsors the mayor.
Matt, good evening.
Good evening, Councilman Matt Tobias, planning and development services. For you tonight, there's a resolution for five homes that the city has purchased. For one on Colwell was for drainage. There was a house on South 10th that was for right-of-way, and the other three houses on Rose, for Rose Lotta for floodplain. And we're looking to do a surplus for these to, with, enter an agreement with Lynn, sorry, Lynn Keller Forbes and her Sioux Empire Development Foundation. They're actually going to move these houses to good locations throughout the city, so that's what we're looking to do tonight.
All right, thanks Matt. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 59 tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Matt on this?
Move approval?
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen, any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, next item.
Next item is 63, Notice of Transfer of Appropriations on the Memorandum dated December 31st, 2021.
Next item.
64 is Audit Report 2101 Spectra Food Service Agreement.
Next item.
Next item is 65, Audit Report 2103 Midco Aquatic Center Cash Handling.
And our next item.
66 is Audit Report 2104 Travel Expenditures.
All right, counsel, any new business for us tonight? All right, seeing none there, we'll go to public input. Just a reminder, input is three minutes per person, and on items we didn't talk about earlier on our regular agenda. So at this time, anyone for public input can come forward.
Greetings, I'm David Zalkitis, and I do a lot of checking into things. Good way to see what's going on, maybe we can make it better, maybe not. And today, I did some looking into the federal communication, the FCC's equal airtime rule. So the basic idea is that if you've got an election coming, that opposing candidates should be given equal airtime. That's what Wikipedia says about it, equal airtime for opposing candidates. Turns out, though, that it's not quite that simple. There's some exceptions. If you're running a documentary, or a scheduled newscast, or a news interview show, or is an on-the-spot coverage, you're kind of off the hook. You don't have to worry about the equal time rule. And what brings this all up is Mayor Paul Tanaken had a two-hour interview on a local radio show, gives him an advantage. But it looks like that advantage is legal.
Point of order. This individual is a candidate criticizing another candidate. That cannot be done in this form.
I'm done.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Good evening, I am Chester DeYoung, I've been here several times. I was an ASA umpire for 40 years, and through that 40 years, I worked several, local, state, regional, national events in a tournament. At each level, everyone knows who's in charge, who has the ultimate say on a subject within the rules and regulations that that sport follows. I was a CFO for over four years for a corporation that worked throughout the United States. They also have rules and regulations that everybody has to follow. Somebody had to make a decision. I was a contractor in the Sioux Falls area for over 30 years, in a family business that lasted over 40 years. To do that, your business has to be very good with a reputation throughout the entire area. In actual fact, we worked with and for the city of Sioux Falls Power and Light, the city sewer, water, stormwater system, and the street departments. Our reputation was such that the city asked me, our corporation, to turn around and design projects for them. In fact, some of the design standards I came up with were actually implemented into city standards, as long as one thing was understood. The city has rules they got to follow, I had to do that. As long as I went in with that idea, we had no problems. The city was willing to work with it. You know, I've never considered myself not to know who had the final say in the city when it comes to standards, because they're all written out. Until last May, when I ran into my first assistant city engineer, the schoolyard bully. I can tell you that, based on driving school bus. Since October, I've lost total faith in all the city's own engineering department and city hall. You have rules and regulations, you are ignoring them. Your engineering department, who sets the standards, rules that all contractors, developers, and engineers who work inside the city of Sioux Falls must follow. The engineering department is the only department enforcing all these rules and regulations. The city engineering department has said, "We cannot build a gravel road in the city of Sioux Falls," and yet they build a road in the city of Sioux Falls, breaking at least two additional rules and regulations that they've got. The mayor, the city engineer reports directly to the mayor. The mayor and the city attorney are both present. I'm trying to figure out exactly who has the ultimate say on this. The rules and regulations are there. They need to be followed. If the city commissioners have that information, I would gladly accept it. You know, I don't know if you guys know this, when they broke ground for that apartment complex going next door to me, that 200-unit building, they were not issued a permit until November 5th. They started construction in October. The permit was not issued until after I called the city.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Sheriff Bruce, Sioux Falls. Like I said before, I'm helping this neighborhood, right? So the city wants to do what they want to do, right? They want to help their friends out. Did you hear what that man said? So I asked Stacy Quayster to get, he's going to have to look at this because they're going to have to unleash lawyers here because there's some stuff that the city shouldn't have done. Andy told the neighborhood that he wasn't going to do any more things with the street until we have a neighborhood meeting, and that's what I want? And that's what they're going to do? Because guess what? The city works for the citizens. We don't brown-nose. We don't scratch people's backs here, okay? Because that's how it's supposed to be rolling. Now, Mr. Mayor, I'm here to address the concerns in Pettigrew. This is my last time addressing this. Neighborhood associations, I'm hooking up with a lot of neighborhood associations. Don't tell me how to run my neighborhood association because my call volume went down 1,481 calls per service, so you can't tell me how to collaborate and build. I used to train the police departments in Los Angeles, California, so you can't tell me nothing about the city. These neighborhood associations do walkthroughs. I want the city code enforcement. I want the health department. I want traffic engineering. And I want the police department to get into Pettigrew and Whittier and all of these other places that we've done walk audits and start walking beside us and getting violations here. I like to die today when I walked only seven blocks in my neighborhood association and came up with 36 health violations, 17 building violations, code enforcement violations, and 13 police violations. My neighborhood. None of y'all in y'all's areas, I'm looking at y'all rich people. Y'all don't have that problem in y'all's areas, right? Y'all never take the time in the city to come and do in our neighborhoods, in the poor neighborhoods. Y'all let the neighborhoods go to craps. If it's not code enforcement, it's the health department. If it's not the health department, it's the police department. They don't have to just get after. Three police officers have to get to on the corner of 11th and summit with the sergeant tonight to do their job. So if the mayor wants to run again, which he's probably going to win, he needs to look at the core areas and try to fix it and try to get his upper management departments to help with the neighborhood associations to clean up, because that's what a walkthrough audit does. I'm demanding. I'm not asking. I'm asking, I'm telling the mayor, I need code enforcement, I need the health department, and I need the police department in my neighborhood. Next week, if you don't do it, we'll be having a news story coverage on this. And I understand the mayor don't like this activity, but it is what it is.
All right. Anyone else tonight for public input? Come on up. Good evening, sir.
My name is Bruce Meyer. And last week, I'm sure everybody who lives around here knows how cold it was. We had about a one-inch snowfall the first or second day of that cold spell. And after that, every day at rush hour, it was slippery. I'm not really complaining about our great city crew, but on Friday last week, I had occasion to be in Watertown. It was so much easier to get around town at the main intersections because they had sand. I don't know why we can't use sand in Sioux Falls. That miracle thing we put on the streets all the time to melt and get rid of whatsoever out there. During every rush hour, morning and evening, it freezes and thaws, freezes and thaws. And any kind of an incline or decline, it's really hard to get started or stopped. So if you could, guys, could use your power, ladies, everybody, to, a little memo to the street department, because we're going to have another snow event, I think, on Thursday. We're going to have about the same kind of weather. Can we please, please, please get some sand on our streets? Give those guys that aren't, ladies that aren't getting any overtime doing snow removal, some extra time in their truck. Can't cost that much. I'm not asking the city to spend $500,000 for a snow event. Sand, please.
All right. Thanks, Bruce. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. Tonight, I'm asking you to alter the city's COVID-19 vaccine outreach campaign to inform parents of their ability to screen their child for prior immunity before having any of the COVID-19 vaccines administered to them. In addition, I'm asking for you to consider subsidizing screening for prior immunity by reimbursing families for SARS-CoV-2 antibody or adaptive T-cell response assays so they might know their immune status. The risk is not zero. Seven weeks ago now, I sat with my mother, father and his primary care physician here in Sioux Falls. We reviewed the results of his electroencephalogram and the neurologist's summary. The EEG obtained in an awake state is abnormal, demonstrating occasional epileptic form discharges over the central parietal region. This represents an area of cortical irritability and potential seizure focus. No electrographic seizures were identified. My younger sister and her family first witnessed the presentation of what the doctor said were likely epileptic petit mal or absence seizures on March 14th of 2021. This is 11 days after his first dose of the Pfizer BioNTech vaccine. He'd never presented these symptoms prior to that day. I first witnessed him seize on May 10th of 2021, wearing culvers on North Louise here in Sioux Falls. He could not walk, could not hear me. He did not blink. He just slowly slid down the wall to the floor as my mother and I tried to hold him. It was as terrifying as it was heart-wrenching. At the previously mentioned appointment, the physician stated that our eyewitness accounts and the results of the EEG met the requirements for reporting to VAERS, and he would file my father's case. Now, we're relatively intelligent people. We understand that wet sidewalks do not make it rain. However, you usually start looking for fire where there's smoke. The Journal of Neuroimmunology states it this way, "Healthcare providers should be aware of the possibility of post-vaccination epilepsy." This process took us nine months. You have some insight into how persistent I can be. Imagine a family less persistent dealing with this. How many stopped asking questions? How many were ashamed into silence and compliance with the propaganda that came forth over the last couple of years? How many doctors wouldn't even pursue it as a possibility? On February 28th, The New York Times published an article entitled "Pfizer Shot Is Far Less Effective in Five-to-Eleven-Year-Olds Than in Older Kids," new data shows. It's disappointing, but not entirely surprising, given this is a vaccine developed in response to an earlier variant, said Eli Rosenberg, deputy director of science in New York State Department of Health, who led the study. Looks very distressing to see this rapid decline, but it's again all against Omicron. The question here is benefit as opposed to risk. Children are at less risk, and especially so if they've already recovered. I'm asking you to once again consider helping them to screen for administration of the vaccine. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Anyone else here tonight for public input? All right. Are you here, ma'am? Come on up.
Good evening.
Carol Gary. I was here a month ago, and thank you for encouraging me to come back. I'm not sure I would have. But I'm here, I brought it up a month ago about, it was a water bill for mobile homes. And I've been trying to figure out, how do I really approach this? And so I have to go back to my nursing. Let's do a diagnosis. Let's do a treatment plan, and let's figure out, the encounters left their hearts, how we're going to fix it. First of all, who are we, who am I representing? I don't live in a mobile home. There are 2,500 mobile homes under the water division right now billing where they are billed according, just split the bill from everyone. So one person in a mobile home is, her water bill, $70 to $80 a month. I live in a home. I'm retired, alone. Mine is $17 to $25 a month. Who are we representing here? And the city council has proved it tonight. You're really there for everyone. But a lot of these people don't know how to come to you. Now, I've heard there's been a lot of, well, people try. So I'm retired. I have time on my hands, so I am going to try to get more information so that we can make a change. And I've been really lucky in my life. I've met a lot of people that have really had positive thoughts, and I think you do. A young man was picking up his daughter off the bus the other day, and I was standing by her, and she was crying. And he said, you know, what's wrong? And I didn't get to hear what she said, but he knelt down in front of her and said, "They don't know you." And maybe that's part of the problem. Who are these people in these homes? I can tell you some that I know. My daughter, who is now in residency in Omaha, lived in one when she was in school. She and her husband and their autistic child. There's no way they could have had an apartment with a four-bedroom. And anyone who knows autistic children, they are not quiet. They oftentimes can disturb someone in another apartment. Our apartments are not soundproof. And they had a home, and that's what these are. These 2,500 people, it's their homes. I'm running out of time, so I just want to thank you, but let you know, I'll be back.
Thanks, Carol.